I'll call this meeting to order. Thank you for coming. It seems like it's been a long time since we've seen each other, but actually it hasn't been that long. So I'm glad everybody's here and I hope your summer's been going well. First item on our agenda is to elect the chairman and vice chair. So at this time I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Stoudt.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The floor is now open for nominations for chairman of the Board of Education.
Mr. Broadridge, please.
I say. Are there other nominations? If not, is there a motion that the nominations be closed?
Make a motion to close. Second.
All in favor of closing nominations, electing Ms. Pam Thomas by acclamation as chairperson of the Board of Education, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The nomination's being closed and no other candidates have been nominated. The board elects Ms. Pam Thomas as chairperson of the Board of Education. Congratulations, Ms. Thomas.
Thanks for all of your support. It is really a pleasure to work with you and I mean that from the bottom of my heart. It is. Now I'd like to ask, we will open the nominations for vice chair. Are there any nominations for vice chair?
Motion to nominate Mr. Broadridge.
We have a motion to nominate Mr. Ridge. Are there other nominations? Hearing none, may I have a motion to close the nominations?
Make such a motion. Second. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That being said, may I have a vote to accept Mr. Ridge as a vice chair by acclamation being that there are no other candidates?
Make such a motion.
May I have a vote? Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Ridge. Brock, would you like to give a speech or anything?
Oh, no.
Before we move into the consent agenda, I want to take just a second to share some information with you. Margaret Brown, you know who was our past chairman of the Board of Education, has been a member of the Board of Education for years, has been a little under the weather and was hospitalized and had to leave the hospital and go to Durham for several months for some rehab and vocational services and physical therapy. So just ask that you remember her in your prayers. She called me and said a wonderful word about the action of this board and we want her to know that we certainly think a lot of her and we wish her well and I will send her a card as to that.
And her husband, her book, her family.
Yes, her husband was too. And I wanted to say it up front before I forgot it. No, no, she'll still be in Durham. This was two weeks ago, I think she left. And Joel may know more about that than I do, but she did call me, so I wanted to pass that on. Under the approval of the consent agenda, you see the items there, I do want to point out, just because I had a question earlier, the Head Start COLA and the Head Start Transportation waiver usually come in the consent agenda because it's more of a formality than anything else and we usually have to write letters ahead of time to send to Atlanta because their dates never align up with ours, so that's why they are in this late agenda. Usually it would be in our revenue meeting agenda. So I ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Before we move into the general business, I would like to announce that we have Mark Price with us who's a commissioner and we're glad that he always is interested. I thought he was coming here today to ask us for a job act and he said no, but he may want one. We can always use your help, Mark. Thank you for coming. First item is the general business, is the Coastal Carolina Community College Board Appointment. If you remember last year, Mr. M.J. Herring, who's been a longtime appointment for this board to Coastal's Board of Trustees, did resign early due to health issues and Jeff Clark was placed there for a year in his current position. At this time Coastal did write a letter and they're asking that Jeff Clark be approved for the next term, which is a four-year term. So I would entertain a motion to accept that.
Make a motion to second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The only discussion, now, sure, I have is that in the future, as I brought up when we first nominated him to take on the Mr. Herring's position, in the land that we often have open process where we could have sales members brought to the board so that we're just not left with one choice when it comes to us.
And I think that we all feel that way too. Since there are no other discussion, let's vote on that and then I'll pass some information out to you that will kind of reiterate what Bob just said. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So Jeff Clark is approved. Last year we had the same comments, but then we kind of let it slide. We just didn't say anything about it. So knowing that this was coming up, I did talk to Mr. Heatherly and I took it upon myself just to draft something so that we could have time, maybe this month and maybe through August and then September, maybe come back together or go to a workshop in August and decide how we want to do it. So let me pass these around and it's just, it's not anything to act on, but it's something to get the conversation started and if you can review that. I just pulled from some other boards that have appointments like this and it would give us a deeper say in the appointment itself. And it's not to mean that we are objecting to any of the people that they have asked us to approve, but it would be our appointment. Also, you will notice, I didn't have Jody make a copy of it, but the commissioners also have a form that they fill out for volunteers who want to be considered for different boards. That is the same application for every board. I figure ours might be a little bit different because of the nature of the appointment and the liaison partnership which should be between the school board and the community college. So I just give that to you to look at and then when we come back in our next work session, we could discuss how we want to word this and get it out because we will have other appointments in June of 2018. There will be another appointment. And this way, the college as well as the board and as well as those people who would like to be considered would know that that was in place. So that's just for information. Next is the bid contracts for the modular buildings. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Mr. Board, this is basically just a formality, but just to give you some history, it may have lasted, may have, earlier this year, the board approved the budget amendment to transfer money to the capital outlay fund, purchase some mobile classrooms, realizing that we had some tight spaces that we had to address before because of the state legislation that went through Richland Primary School and State Side Elementary School, the main ones that we're looking at. To speed up the purchase and installation, because this happened in May, what we've done is we're asking to piggyback on an existing contract that Fender County's already got in place. They had their contract for mobile classrooms established in March of 2007. So by doing this, this actually expedites the process and we've already been looking at getting the mobile classrooms built. So what we're asking right now is if we're considering that this piggyback on existing contract with Fender County. And also, I've got Sherry Barnhart here too to get any specific questions about the purchasing process.
Any questions on that? Comments?
We need a little more.
Uh-huh, we will.
I do have some comments.
Okay. Let's do the motion. Can I have a motion to accept this?
I'm ready to accept it. Second.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Piggybacking is a traditional process that is very beneficial to governmental agencies. It allows agencies to benefit from the work that other agencies have already done. You don't have to duplicate the work. In this particular case, have we looked at Fender's, was it a competitive bid?
It was a competitive bid. Did Sherry tell me if I'm saying it incorrectly, but it was competitive?
Yes, so Fender County actually placed a formal bid process to obtain their contract.
And do we have a copy of that?
We do have a copy of it that we can give to you.
Yes.
Okay. And is part of this process under the 143, General Statute 143, I believe it is, is that it has to be advertised 10 days before we make the decision. Was that done?
Yes, it was advertised back in late May and because we didn't have a board meeting in early July, we didn't present it to you as well. So we did advertise a minimum of 10 days before the bid opened before we brought it to the board.
And do we have any contract? There's nothing in this that we're approving today that tells us what we're paying for or how much we're paying, so.
Well, the normal process.
Okay, and I do understand that we already approved some monies to go to this process. Okay. How many are we buying? How much are they costing? And what's the piggyback value?
That's what Steve answered, man.
Okay. Well, costs, a couple of things going on. We're looking at nine mobile classrooms, two State Side, seven for Richlands. In that process, this is just a standard function. Normally, we wouldn't be coming to the board to go through the bid process for something of this nature because it doesn't meet the threshold of what we have to bring to the board. So this is just part of the operational process that we go through to get things taken care of. But at the same time, that's the reason why we didn't bring a contract with us at this time. What we're looking at is just piggybacking off an existing contract. I can provide the existing Fender contract to you. But I will let you know that the Fender contract was about $38,000, a few dollars shy of that per mobile unit and our contracts from last year were about $38,000, about $37,700, so about $300 difference.
So it's $38,000 for a double Y.
$38,000 for double Y including installation.
Now, I looked on Fender's website for their board reports and the one that they did too, they did one back in November of last year for approximately $72,000 for a double Y and $75,000 for a double Y in May of this year. So I'm confused, I wonder if the $38,000.
Mr. Williams, I believe that what Fender County had classified as their line items for those projects was a single line item encompassing two units each.
Okay, so we come out to a amount of $75,000.
Steve, didn't we, one time I remember that we just kind of rounded it off to like $50,000 would be our cost with getting the unit installed in it, hooking up if it did have sewer with it, you know, sewer things, didn't we?
I believe that the cost that we looked at was closer to $65,000. One of the reasons why we're looking at that too is we've got to get the little ramps and we've got to do site work associated with it. They'll install, they'll install the modular classroom.
But we do the.
We do the sidewalks, we do the technology, we do the ramps and stuff. So this is actually a good deal for us. I mean, what we budgeted looks like a pretty good investment.
I'm disappointed with the process that we're using here and I understand that the circumstances that we are facing are exigent circumstances. The legislature created a situation that we have to jump through hoops in order to satisfy it. But when it comes to the board, we're required to approve these purchases or we're not required. Obviously, you're bringing it to us to approve a process of some sort because it's a piggyback contract. Whereas if we went with the normal contracting process for one unit, wouldn't meet the dollar threshold to have to do that, all right? But when we make multiple purchases and it exceeds that threshold, I believe it still has to come back to the board for approval. If we're buying one or if we buy 10, that would determine the overall value of the contract amount, how much we're doing would determine what enough the board has to approve. Is that right?
Mr. Williams, I think the key issue of this is the piggybacking and the way, my understanding has been sometimes since I looked at it, at the time, these rules were set up by the legislature that the piggybacking provision required board approval. Because we're utilizing piggybacking, otherwise, you have the board delegates to superintendent staff to do bidding and awarding contracts. So it's not the amount that's the operative point here, it's the using the piggyback procedure. I think that's what caused, as far as the legislature required that to be a board approval, that's not a delegated thing. And I could go back and double check that, but I believe that's the reasoning why this one has come to the board because we're utilizing that piggybacking provision.
So what's the overall contract value then again?
I actually have that, Mr. Myers. I have the purchase requisition with me. The materials for each of the seven units is $17,500 each and the labor and installation is $20,466.25 each and that brings our total cost with tax to $284,367.21. That will be our total expenditure for these seven units.
Would you repeat that total again?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, Jeff has your penny down there.
He always does.
Thank you so much for your company.
Every little bit? Yeah. Chair, when I read the opening sentence in the couple letter that in the May second meeting, the board has already approved a budget amendment to transfer money to the capital outlay fund to purchase, so to me, that's already taking place and I feel confident that Stoudt has followed all the guys and everything else and followed the policy and so forth and knowing the purchasing department, that's what they do tighter than the bark on the tree, so.
Are we going to have enough time now to purchase these and get them installed?
Yes, sir. If the board decides to approve this motion and stuff, then we'll be able to get these mobile classrooms, they're waiting and ready for us to go. So as soon as we approve it, we can go ahead and begin to start getting installed.
And who are we buying it from?
From Modular Technologies.
That's the company out of Kinston.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I would think the results of House Bill 13 and the potential for us to occur next year, that's going to be a popular process, the piggybacking. Everybody's going to be modular trainers.
That's exactly right. We are. Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Good questions, y'all. That's why we have this workshop or meeting. Next is the construction bid for the new Regional Skill Center and I want to just open this discussion before Steve gets up. We've been planning for this center for over 10 years. I remember the original design. We were meeting in schools and we met at Hunter's Creek Middle School and presented a design and we were all, I mean, everybody there, the parents, the staff, just were excited about the possibilities. And so finally, it has come to fruition and I'm proud of that. Steve?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First base of the new Regional Skill Center project, which includes the site work and construction of the Shell building, was bid on June 15, 2017. There were five qualified bidders that sent in a bid proposal, with four of the general contractors having previous experience in Oslo County. The lowest responsible bidder for the project, which includes the base bid and one alternate for the site work, is Quater Construction Company headquartered in Jacksonville, North Carolina. Quater Construction Company's bid of $3,777,400 is within the projected construction budget of $5 million. Funding for the project has been provided by the state specifically for construction of a regional skill center in Oslo County. Pinnacle Architectors Group reviewed the qualifications of the Quater Construction Company and has provided a letter of recommendation. As a matter of fact, Mr. Baker is here with us from Quater, Pinnacle Architect right now and one of the things we did want to mention is when we first need to pack it out, the letter of recommendation had some numbers transposed on it and we corrected that and we went back and re-verified all the numbers in the bids and they are correct now. If additional information is needed and stuff, we have to pack some information for the bid documents as well. Randy, I don't know if you want to mention anything about the site plans or?
I'd be glad to. Thank you, Mr. Myers. Is everyone got a little small eight half by eleven site plan with your package? I'm sorry, we don't have a larger board. The site plan, I don't know if everyone's aware of the location, on the lower left-hand side of the project is the governmental building. We're right down the road in this alternate price that you have. We're extending the driveway approximately 800 and some feet to a little cul-de-sac. We have approximately 257 parking spaces on-site for the Regional Skills building. That gives overflow for any type of meetings for your CTE students. Sometimes you have areas in these CTE buildings that you have guest speakers, but you need a larger space to house these conferences or meetings. We've got enough parking spaces there, we've got eight handicap spaces and most of this driveway is heavy-duty pavement due to the circular for fire truck access and also for the activities in the back of the building for the automotive and the HVAC proposed up here. Any questions? Just a little brief survey. We are not grading the entire project. We are grading basically half of the property that the school board presently owns. So the future expansion, we do have half the extra site. Beautiful piece of land. We've had soil tests taken out there. Until we get down to this little wet ones area, everything is on high ground, so everything should be, should be compensated. Questions? Comments?
Madam Chair, can we take questions before we make a motion?
I think in this case it might be appropriate, a clarification.
The proposal that we have before us today is only a portion of the overall construction contract.
That is correct. It's the shared building.
And once we get the, once we get phase one started and we approve that contract, we're basically approving whatever's in the drawings for that particular one, right? Does that include a board foundation?
It does, yes, sir.
And the foundation then would have all the appropriate plumbing, electrical, et cetera, whatever has to go through there.
Underneath the slab, yes.
All the stuff. Will that limit what we want to do with the inside of the building or later maybe?
No, sir. It does not. What we've done is basically, we've got some major trunk lines throughout the building and in a lot of shell buildings that we do and that are done worldwide, if you will, you pour the slab and to come in in future to saw cut the floor, to add additional plumbing, things like that, and it's just the waste lines. All of the water lines are overheated. So we do have the sprinkle line going underneath. So as far as anything in the future that you would like, it's not a tremendous amount more to saw cut the floor. A lot of people think so. It is not that much.
The building is being constructed as a approximately 30-foot deep height, is that right?
That is correct.
Is that all for one floor?
That is for one floor and there is a proposed office area for the second floor if you look at the plan on plan right of the site. Now, that is just proposed.
Okay.
Nothing.
Mr. Williams, the other thing too is on the backside of the building, some of these programs will require a higher ceiling level too, so that's one of the reasons why we have the higher level there. So front side of the building, we have the potential of doing a second floor or a mezzanine area and stuff there as well. The final design hasn't been finalized, but in the back area, we did need the extra high ceilings for some of those programs.
We're trying to utilize the space that will be available because the auto body and those type shops need a higher ceiling. So instead of having multiple levels of roofing, we have one level, but also allows us to have additional roof to use in the future that we don't have, I mean, we're not currently having the plans to use right now, but it's there for us to be able to do something with it.
Is it more expensive to build that into the plan after the fact? Otherwise, if we put up preformed concrete walls, we put a roof on it, how do we come back in and build a second floor and untie it? On something that, especially in front offices where I presume we're going to have not 30-foot ceilings in all of the classrooms.
That is correct. That is correct. We do have, in the price that you've got there, we've got the structural columns already in the foundation for the mezzanine. There's a proposed mezzanine going around so that in these areas, you can actually look down in the shop if you have guests come in and look, you can look down in the shop areas, HVAC, automotive. It is a great idea to do something like that. It's wonderful. A lot of the race car manufacturers, they do the same thing. You have guests all over. With this type building, needless to say, you will have a lot of guests come and you can visualize what's happening in this school and it is a plus for this type.
Well, it also becomes a safety issue.
It really does. You do not have to walk around in the shop areas and that way it keeps all the public away from those spaces.
The mezzanine though is not included in this proposal, correct?
The structure of the columns, absolutely. It's in this building. As far as the joists and things, it would be in the outfit cost.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
And Randy, that does make it a lot less expensive doing it up front than doing it after the fact.
It really does, yes, ma'am.
One of the things we wanted to look at in that process is make sure we're scalable and flexible going forward because you have different programs coming in. 10 years from now, you may have different structural programs that you want to have. By having got higher ceilings and by having some of the foundations in place that Mr. Baker's already put in place, it's going to allow us some flexibility to make changes going forward.
That's correct. And just briefly, on the side of the building, we're trying to complement the governmental building, not trying to overbear. It is a pleasingly complimentary building to the governance.
If there are no other questions, I'd ask for a motion to approve the construction if the.
I'll make such a motion.
Motion in a second, two seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Oh, ma'am. Okay, I understand, I think that we, I'd like to make some comments at this point after we've got the motion on the table, as well as the call. Let me put it this way, there's no one sitting at this table that doesn't want a skill center. We're about to approve a $3.8 million, $5 million budget for phase one. I have some concerns over phase two. We're basically going to build a shell and we've been presented with nothing to tell us what the second phase is going to look like. We've got a diagram in here that is part of the package that the board has provided that shows a proposed breakout of what it looks like. There's a lot of office spaces, a lot of classrooms, of course, we went to these classrooms, the automotive bays, the HVAC bays. One of the things I have concern though is right in the middle of this thing, we have a huge culinary kitchen in what appears to be a wardrobe.
Rick, what would you?
I'll address it. Let's talk about the culinary first. First of all.
First of all, there's been a number of stakeholders involved in this. All the culinary folks in our county as well as the other two counties have been involved in this process of looking at the design of the culinary. And we have a really good idea from Jack Northside that has it. One of the things that they talked about having was a restaurant that's open to the public. So obviously, you're going to have to have some general space that's larger than normal. Once they get the hospitality set up and the cooking and culinary training, so it requires a lot of space. I can tell you from experience from when I was in Skyland County, our high school had this type of program and actually took up three to four different classrooms combined and a open area for public to come in from the outside. It does take a lot of space for the culinary. The second question that you have was, yeah, it looks like a boardroom, but that's not the intent of for it to be a boardroom. It's really a multipurpose room. It's flat, it's not, not permanent seating. I don't think there's even a stage area, but there's got to be places for when presentations and those type of things that come in there outside the shop for big presentations, also for professional development. So you have to have that space. One of the things in Danvall, we've had in our county, that we've had no place to really go for professional development where it doesn't disturb a cafeteria or some type of other function other than an auditorium. So this is, this will be a great place for multipurpose for all those places inside as well as for training for our own folks here in the central office. This is all we have right here. So we're looking at it mildly fast and we have the building and we have the 50,000 square feet that will sit in. It's not set up just to have a board meeting. It's really set up for the use of the school itself, the multiple schools, as well as the training that is going to be needed in the future.
I hear what you're saying and I see something different. That's where my concern was when I first saw it.
And let me address one more thing. This is a draft that will be coming back to you in the next board meeting in September. Not next one, but following the office board meeting. So we should have had draft across the front of it so you wouldn't think this is an absolute because we're still making some changes and tweaks. I know we had some suggestions that came to us yesterday and that's what we're doing from stakeholders is taking what best fit this new center. Because we want the very best of the best when we have it and make sure it's functional. I mean, I think that's the most important part of what we're trying to get from everybody. Everybody who has some different ideas from the collision to community college to, you know, even the culinary pieces. And when we're talking about classrooms, we're talking about cybersecurity and those type of things that'll be sectioned off for different things that we're doing within the building. But we're excited to be able to put some things in place that's going to be able to have multi-purposes in terms of what we're doing with the Career Technical Center. So what you see right now, what you don't like, from any board or from any member in the public is, at least they have a look at it now. They may email us and say what they like or don't like if they have some knowledge on it and we'll take it back and look at it. But we have about five, five weeks to kind of get this permanently so we can bring it back. We would like to go out for bids right after we show you the board in September. You know, I'll show that and then if approved, we can take it out for bids because we'll need to do it fairly quickly.
And I agree with the fact that we need to be flexible. I think that's a major project for anything. We need to be flexible. I may be the only one that doesn't like the idea of a boardroom. That's not what I'm trying to get across. What I'm trying to get across is that we're here today to approve a contract for the first phase of the project that this board has never been briefed on or never seen architectural drawings until last Thursday on the entire project. This board didn't have any decision process in deciding whether or not we're going to break it into two phases, how big the project would be, whether or not we could keep them at a budget of five million dollars, as I was told multiple times by multiple individuals, that five million dollars would complete this project. Now we're coming in with almost four million dollars plus whatever we, it will be over four million dollars time to take the contract here plus adding the architectural fees that are included in that. We're coming in at four million dollars and we haven't even gotten Phase Two yet. And no one has told this board how much Phase Two's going to cost. So we're by the picking the pole. We don't know what we're getting. All we know that what's on here, what's being proposed is that we've got a piece of land, we're going to develop that land, we're going to put a shell building on it, and believe us, we're going to come back with something. Well, nobody's talked about how we're going to finance Phase Two, how much it's going to cost, what's going into the process. And I understand we have multiple counties that are involved in this process. The idea of a restaurant...
Well, Bob, I don't mean to interrupt you to just cut you off, but you're going into the next phase. We're trying to get this...
Well, and all the restaurant manager, it ties into this because we only have a five million dollar budget. We have nothing to pay for the second phase.
The five million dollars was set aside for the construction of the building itself.
That was not what I was told. I asked several times whether or not the five million dollars would get us out the door and open the project by last year and I was told yes.
I never heard that. I, I, it was for the building itself. That was the original five million dollars.
Mr. Williams, one of the things too, when we come back with Phase Two and the diagrams and show you what it's going to look like after we get the final input from everybody, is we'll be requesting to go out to bid for Phase Two because that's where all the meat is as far as the programs and the instruction. That's where we want to see this. Not only that, what we'll be doing is because we know it's a tight, tight budget right now, we'll also be looking at, when we do this, we'll be creating alternates on this, on this bid. So we can actually pick what's the most important things and go forward and determine where we have, I mean, what needs to be done, any money available. So in other words, if we've got two million dollars worth of outfit, I mean, we only got a million dollars worth of item, I mean, funds right now, then what we need to do is, okay, what are the most important things? And by putting the contract together with alternates, we can, we can cherry pick basically what needs to be done now and then what can be done as we get more funding.
And I do remember talking to each one of you about sometimes we have to open one or two of these skills and not all of them at the same time because of affordability because you never know what that's going to look like when it goes out to bid, where it's going to come in the end of the day. We can all speculate in terms of how, how far five million dollars is going to take you, you know? And, you know, obviously it looks like alternate, the alternate bid process is something we have to look very closely at. And also, you know, having conversations on additional revenue if needed, that can have that conversations within the next five or six weeks so I can bring back to the board, you know, some alternatives to you as well in terms of how we function the complete project.
And I appreciate that. My major concern is who made the decision to break it into two phases, number one? Was that based on cost of the building? Because we were never briefed that it was going to be a two-phase project that was going... We were told that it was going to be a five million dollar project that's going to open up for August of next year. And that's the reason I kept questioning whether five million dollars was going to do it. Because it seemed like a...
Who told you that?
Steve that told me that? The superintendent that told me that?
So the process was when we were going to go out for bid and we talked about this through our pre-boards the last time we met about going out to bid. I'll, I'll, I'll say to the board that if we had the instructional plan, I wish we had shown it at the last board meeting so you can have a view of what it's going to look like. I did know because we're in a time constraint period, we have to get the shell building up. I also know if we waited until the floor plan was done and waited until late September, we were not going to finish on time in order to open it up for next school year. So that's what really caused for the first phase to be completed. So we can stay on, stay on the timeline in order to have this completed so we can open up some of these areas in the skilled building for the eighteen, nineteen school year. So it's, it's almost a must in order to break it up in order to complete the project in a timely manner. But in order to wait, like you're looking at the floor plan now and having some questions, we wanted to make sure that was right first because we knew the first phase of putting the shell building up was a critical phase that's going to have to happen anyway before we put anything inside. So our stakeholders, you know, they have taken more time than we expected in terms of trying to get this situation because it's been back and forth, back and forth quite a few times. So that's the decision, we had to go ahead and make the first bid on the, on the shell building knowing that's going to be needed and the additional cost and that was not going to be much more to do it a second bid in order to retrofit the building inside.
Do we have an estimate what the second phase is going to be? I understand that until the bids come in and we don't have firm numbers, it's always the way in the contracting process. Until we get the actual bids on paper and we select a contractor, we never know exactly what it's going to cost. But we should have an estimate based on architectural drawings and the scope of the project of what its total project cost is going to be. And that's what my concern is. Right now, we have funding for five million dollars to build the building. Of that, we're going to take out about 4.3 of that million dollars for what? At least about $700,000 left over. To equip the building as we're going to, especially if we're putting the items that have been proposed to go into this, you know, what, what processes are we going to use? The construction of it is only part of it. If we don't have bays outfitted with the equipment that we need, if we don't have the kitchen outfitted with the equipment that we need, all that's going to cost money. I haven't heard anyone tell me where the funding sources come from.
Well, Bob, I think, and I'm speaking out of turn, I'm sure, and Steve, I don't mean to take this from you. We have to have the shell building there, planning for the future. The next phase, which would be what we're going to do with the building, will be up to us and what we can afford. But we've got to have some expansion there so we can add other trades as we get the funding to implement them. If we're not prepared to do that, we will be stuck there with a culinary academy and automotive trade center and that'd be it. We want it to be bigger than that or we want it to be better. So if we don't get the regular construction in on that shell building to be applicable for those trades to come in, we will be limited ourselves. I, I think that there's going to be some more money that is going to come our way. I believe that there's an opportunity for us to utilize, hopefully through our commissioner, some excess money that may be left over from our underbids on our construction projects at the Richlands Elementary and the Dixon Middle School project, which will help us complete those. Also, I believe, and John Shannon's not here to answer this, we're going to have Automotive Industries honor us by giving us equipment so that we can put the, install those without a cost to us. So that's where I'm looking at it as that if we don't approve this, we can't do any of the other things. We're going to lose the land, we're going to lose our, our center.
And Madam Chairman, Mr. Williams, as far as the estimates are concerned, I mean, it can range anywhere from five million up to seven and a half million. And that's dependent on what we're going to do with the alternatives, I mean, what funding's going to be available. If it's five million, then we'll do, we'll do as much as we can with the money to make sure we have some programs, construction in there to start school up. If we wanted to look at it fully fleshed out, it could all be up to seven and a half million.
And I think that's totally complete with everything we wanted to. So my goal is to have some conversations in the next five or six weeks in case it does happen and see if we have additional revenue opportunities down the road. That's what we have with our own budget in terms of what we can, can't do. And then bring that back to the board in terms of how we can function and make that happen.
I understand and respect your comments and feelings and so forth, but it has always been my understanding in this entire process that the five million dollars provided by the General Assembly was startup money to rent the building. And thank goodness County Commissioner stepped forward and donated the property. If they hadn't have done that, I don't know if we, this will be even a topic on today's agenda. So there's a lot of support for this, for this facility. And based on what you said and the workshops with Mr. Shannon, that people are already ready to come in and support us. And I think it's going to be a showcase personally, it's going to happen, it's going to be a showcase for this county, for the park in particular. And make the comment that Mr. Baker stated at the beginning, we can start with Dr. Eason. Once this facility gets up and running, you're looking at how many students and staff.
Well, the way the schedule will be divided on any given day, you'll be looking at somewhere from 400 to probably 525 students at any given time. Staff will be determined based on the classes that make within each of the program areas, you know, how many HBAC instructors may we need, how many auto bodies. So, you know, staff could vary just a little bit. And Mr. Taylor, if I can just share this and Mr. Williams, I, I don't want to say this incorrectly, so please accept this in the spirit that it's intended. This trade center is very similar at this point in its concept to things that we do all over the school system in any given year. And I'll just give you an example. Several years ago, because Ms. Thomas is right, it has been a 10-year vision and initiative. But we made the decision to house the three towers at Northside High School, Jacksonville High School and Southwest High School. There comes a point in major initiatives like this, whether it's a Phase Two or whatever we decide to call it, where you have to look at all of your existing resources and then those things have to shift. And, you know, all of the automotive resources had to be moved to Southwest High School. All of that stuff was not always there. Those educators had to be housed at Southwest High School. When we were fortunate enough to have plumbing, Mr. Shannon and his team looked at all available resources, worked with maintenance, and all of those resources had to go to Jacksonville High School. So once we move into a Phase Two and look at the instructional programming and look at federal funds and look at state funds and state funds, then there's a lot of shifting that will begin to take place for this one, not only within Onslow County, but within some of our partnerships. So it's hard, we do this all of the time, whether it's moving an exceptional children's program, whether it's relocating a music program. And at this point, it just becomes a little bit more complicated for people that exist outside of the action teams and outside of the staff that do it every day. It's just, it's just a more complicated process.
Let me just, just, as we read your figure... Oh, go ahead.
Tom.
The idea and the concept of this career center didn't start with this board. And you're right when you talk about ten years ago, as a high school principal and I saw kids coming through our program and how badly 35, 30, 35% of our children that weren't going on to a four-year school, but they were so talented mind-wise and hand-wise. This has been a dream for a long time. And we've talked about this. We talked about it costing 10 to 12 million dollars. That's not just a throw-out figure. We talked about that with this board a long time ago. And I happened to be at the careers day at Coastal Carolina with Senator Brown and he and I were talking about it. And he said, "Well, Paul, I can't come up with that kind of money, but I can come up with some money." So he came up with the figure that we got. We, we've known all along that five million dollars is not going to do everything we want to do. But in Onslow County, and thank goodness the commissioners came up with the property because we'd be talking about a lot more money with water and sewer and all that. There's no way on God's green earth that we're going to build this project total for five million dollars. But I can tell you this, if we don't do Phase One, you won't have to worry about Phase Because you've got to start somewhere. And we're not going to go in and totally equip this. And I understand we need some kind of figure. Well, the figure was there. We, we've talked about it before, 10 to 12 million dollars. But we do a lot of projects in Onslow County that way because we don't have the funds to completely do a turnkey job. So this is a start. And yes, then we'll have, and I hope we can ask for some funds because Dixon Middle came in under bid, Richlands is going to come in under bid. But there are also some partnerships out there that if we do Phase One, we're going to have grants and monies to help us finish this project. Senator Brown said the same thing automotive-wise. All the automotive dealerships in this county, they want us to have this project because they can't find technicians. And we're going to make them technicians and we're going to recruit them. So I think we're going to have a lot of partners to come in and help us with Phase Two. But my bottom line is if you don't do Phase One, you don't have to worry about Phase
I just want to follow up on the numbers. If you didn't have that multipurpose room, where were those students and staff going to have?
There would be nowhere to go. And in the models that we have looked at... And in the models that we have looked at, and I can't speak to the scope or the measurements but that's just not my thing, but in all of the models that we have looked at, and they call them everything in the world, there is always a large common area. This is not a traditional school. During the day, the kids will go there to do research, they'll go there to work on small groups. I mean, that space will always be used and you've got to remember with a split schedule, you will have children coming in, they're young adults, from Jones County, from Duplin County. They may arrive at 10 o'clock and their class may not start until 10:20. So there will always be students and instructors who may be in between classes within that commons area. The nicest models that we've seen are the models where in that great big common area, the students can sit, do research, grab a sandwich from the culinary program, you know, get a little bit of lunch and they go on to their practice. So that space is, I don't want to confuse anybody, but that space is almost like a media center. It will be the hub of that center. It will be where the buzz and where all of the good conversation and in-between class time, and it will have so many different provinces that I think it's going to be very, very utilized.
But Dr. Eason, you have a work clinical area, but you have also a seated learning area. Do you have to have those two there?
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm glad you mentioned that. So when I see this draft, right, I see a boardroom. That is not a boardroom. I see that as a boardroom because when we meet here, we're displacing teachers and program directors because this is their staff development. Actually, this is their staff development building. When the principals meet once a month or a while, do you still meet in the maintenance?
Wherever we're at.
It's the room that's the largest. And so you displaced maintenance and auxiliary.
Maybe we ought to just name it Students Center.
And then when we meet at Blue Creek, we are displacing the PD program for that afternoon and so forth. I don't see this as a boardroom. Well, I see the setup boardroom, but I see that as an option. So first and foremost, this is a room focused on students and staff and the program. It's an option if the board chooses to move its meetings over.
Yes, sir. You know, on a funny note, Mr. Taylor, I was just telling Mr. Ridge, Meeting Room One across from our receptionist has not been the boardroom for, gosh, eight, nine years. But those of us who have been around forever, when someone says to me, where is the literacy meeting, I will still say it's in the boardroom and everybody knows that that's Meeting Room One. So I think it's more of a semantics thing than it is a usage thing.
Let me say one more comment. Back to your point on, as we finish, we will have to do a lot of existing moving of what we already have in order maybe to open the building up. But we do know once Phase One's done, some of the vendors are waiting to see the project actually started for their final commitment. But we have automotive. I know John's worked with a lot of automotive and culinary people right now and there's quite a bit of money that he's talking about that will be given to those departments in order to retrofit those areas. What will be new, what will be old, I can't tell you at this point. I'd love to be able to open up with everything brand new, but, you know, the realistic part of it, when you're talking about funding and what we have, you know, left in the kitty, we'll determine all that at the end.
Are the other counties supposed to also add funds?
Yes, they're helping as well, whatever equipment they have. This is all, you know, it's a three-county ordeal and we know we're housing it in our school system and really doing a lot of the legwork and leading the meetings. Everybody's been involved with it from Jones and Duplin as well.
And working with the base.
Yes.
There's over 50 members of the skills center, action team right now as well. So, I mean, we can give that this way if we need to see, but it comes from the outside community, it comes from other school systems, the base, community college and us as well.
Are we proposing to move any administrative offices open from CTE?
We haven't had that conversation. We just wanted to be able to, you know, have it open for students. Obviously we'll need some money over there that will be a manager of the building and how that looks like or what's that title we haven't gotten that far.
Bob, I agree with you. I kind of like equating this to building a house. When you start to build your house, you want to know exactly what everything's going to cost and then you get in there and as you start building it, what happens? You add little things here, you take something off here. So I know that as, once we get the flooring done, the floor plan itself for the site plan and everything, that we're going to be making changes as we move along.
But it's been an awful, awful lot of planning and discussion and field trips to wherever to show us what you've done. It's just, and I appreciate all the time and effort that's been going into this. You tried to get one school open, you tried to build another and maintain 37 sites at the same time. So my head's off to be.
I still had some reservations with regards in front. Obviously, I understand that $5 million isn't going to cover the entire budget. The county, along with tourism dollars, built a shell building that sat on the property of it for several years because they couldn't sell the property. They eventually sold it and built another one. So it turns out to be a good process. Time after their facilities for a long time. The public's going to be looking at us approving a project. And it's something that this county needs, it's something the surrounding counties need. And I'm in favor of the skills center. My only concern, or my major concern I should say, is that we don't know how we're going to fund Phase Two yet and whether or not we can phase in parts of the programs as we go through this process. And that causes some consternation for me because generally when we design and build a project for one of the schools that we've got, we go out, we secure the funding. Once we've got the secured funding, then we design the project, we build the project, we move the kitchen. In this particular case, we went out and secured part of the funding and we're on a hopeful prayer that we'll be able to get the other either from the General Assembly or from the county or we'll turn our piggybacks backs inside out and we pony up the money. And I expect industry to, that was one of the understandings I had all along, was that industry would come along and help us put some of this stuff inside. But the general building of the building itself or the outfit of the building that we're going to be doing, general industry's not going to help us with that. That's going to take hard capital. That's something we've got to come up with.
I think we've hashed this out. We know what is the general feeling around here. We understand and appreciate Bob's comments too. I mean, they are a concern to all of us about the next phase, but we've got to get this phase done. So we have a motion and a second. I would think that we need to call for the question.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Thank you.
Steve, do you have a comment?
Well, the only, the other thing I was going to mention was as far as, we don't like doing projects in phases. I mean, that's something that Mr. Williams, we agree on. We've done it in the past. I mean, one example was the Dixon Middle School project, which has just been completed. So we're coming to a conclusion right now. We had to do a Phase One just because we had to have building permits in place prior to a certain timeframe. And then that was actually a little bit trickier than what this project is right here because we had to make sure the footings and foundations matched up with the new contract coming in to put the platform and the pads down and everything. So we had a little bit of work to do in that process too. So sometimes we do do it. It's nothing that we like doing at all, but sometimes it needs to require that we get it done and get something done at a specific time.
Thank you. We have one more thing that we've had a legal issue that has been probably, I guess, has been on the table for a while before even our attorney was all ready and I've asked him if he would share that information with us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I passed around a little memo, I don't know if it's in your package or not. What happened was, well, the statute requires me to disclose to the board in an open session, the settlement of a complaint against the board. So back in April, there was a complaint filed against the board for personal injuries from a kindergarten student. We knew about it. We knew about the claim that a kindergarten student was injured and that was reported to Mr. Meyer's office and Mr. Meyer's office reported it to you at the National Insurance Carrier. At that point, that was the end of the communication. No one ever got nothing from me and the case went its separate way and I got notice from Ms. Ramsey of a calendar for trial in Superior Court on May 9th. So I followed up with who the attorneys were and said, hey, I never got a copy of the complaint. The board never got a copy of the complaint. What's going on? Figure out what's going on. And basically what happened was whoever the agent was for Utica, in the past 20 years has always contacted me. Didn't happen this time. They contacted a lawyer directly in Charlotte. We don't deal with lawyers in Charlotte. They're either New Bern or here or very, very close by. The lawyer in Charlotte who represents the school board didn't contact the school board or me or anybody else and they just settled the case. That is, Utica authorized the settlement of the claim by the child who was injured. And the calendar that Ms. Ramsey got was the Superior Court judge approving what's called a minor settlement. So I went up there, we had the hearing and the judge approved the settlement of $36,000 that was totally paid by Utica for the injuries sustained by the child. It's very unusual in all my dealings with the claims for injuries, this has never happened before. I really don't know what happened at Utica, but it didn't go the usual way. There's no damage to us other than we just got kind of blindsided, but I still had the duty to report to you that there was a claim against the board and it was settled.
Any questions for Mr. Irwin? Anything for the, that you'd like to share with any of us before I ask for a German? Thank you again. Happy birthday, Paul. And I know the fire trucks are on alert when you light those candles today.
Ms. Thomas, let me just say this. It's a flavor of beer I'm blowing out.
That's right. We have a motion to adjourn.
No, move second.
Now, second, Rock Second. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Y'all have a great day. Enjoy the rest of this summer.